Okay, good morning. It is July thirty first at nine o'clock. I will call the meeting to order. You have the agenda before you. I believe that after a phone call with the drainage attorney and Courtney and myself, I think that we will more than likely be tabling item number eight, but I'll wait and we'll take action on that. Actually, there's a change to through the drainage code that took effect on July first, where the railroads do their own repairs within their right of way. And it requires us to notify them within thirty days. And so so I think it will be, there'll be some further discussion between myself and the drainage attorney. And then we would take action on that later. If there's nothing else, I'd accept a motion to approve the opinion.
Motion approved.
Second, a motion and second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Betty, if you'll read the minutes of the July twenty fourth, please.
July twenty fourth, twenty twenty three, Chairman Cluse followed the regular meeting of the Wright County Board of Supervisors toward nine AM. Members present were Rasmussen or was were Cluse, Rasmussen, and Helgabold. Motion by Rasmussen, seconded by Helgabold to approve the tentative agenda. Motion carries. Minutes of the previous regular meeting of July seventeenth, twenty twenty three, and a special meeting of July twentieth, twenty twenty three, were read and approved. Approved claims for payment. Discussions were held concerning Resolution twenty twenty three dash thirty two by Kylie Lang, Summit Carbon Solutions Project Manager, Bob Ritter, Bill Sullivan, Turnkey Logistics for Summit Carbon Solutions, Isaac Risso, Summit Carbon Solutions Construction Manager, and Will Higgins, Raceline Alternative Energy. There was a motion by Cluse, seconded by Rasmussen to approve of Resolution twenty twenty three dash thirty two. A resolution by Wright County Supervisors and their capacity as trustees of individual drainage districts on the construction of a hazardous liquid pipeline or pipeline on, over, across, or beneath drainage districts or drainage districts' infrastructure in the county with four amendments as follows. Under one G, at the end of the second sentence, change the permit, the period to a comma and add, and before any exploratory excavation is commenced as provided in paragraph two D. Under section one J, update engineer name to McClure Engineering Snyder and Associates Incorporated. To A, at the end of the paragraph, change the period to a comma and add, unless the Iowa Utilities Board rules that the applicant may proceed with the permit pending the appeal process. And at the end of the document, after item M, add a signature line for the board and board chairman and for the auditor to attest. By roll call, vote ayes. Cluse, Rasmussen, and Helgabold nays, none. Resolution twenty twenty three dash thirty two duly passes and reads as follows. And there you can see the majority of it. And that there is a full copy of Resolution twenty twenty three dash thirty two available in the auditor's office and on the Wright County website. So we did a specific section of it, but did not print, what was it, nine pages?
Right. Thank you for saying the material.
Motion by Helgabold, seconded by Rasmussen to adjourn the meeting. Motion carries.
Are there any additions or corrections? According to the standard proof is read. Claims have been around, no enforcement issues. Did we get all of that, Carl? Have you seen them?
Yes.
Open forum for public input.
Quick question. On this drainage, may I go through and cut these district tile? Will the landowners be notified also?
It shouldn't be cutting the district. The mains and the laterals should be bored under. And that's in our discussions with Bill Sullivan, that has been our direction.
Okay. So that's, that opens up another can of worms. What are they gonna do? It doesn't say anything in the easement either about boring on your property, on private property.
That, that would be between the, the landowner and and Summit Carbon Solutions, I would think. I would think that that would be covered in that easement.
Would that be in that, would that be in our drainage district easement, though?
No, because usually they're gonna be crossing that at a perpendicular way.
Okay. So they wouldn't stay on our easement, so then it would have to be.
In order to bore underneath it, you would have to be back away out from the easement. Depending on the depth of the tile.
Can you answer that, Isaac? Well, how wide is your easement?
I think fifty feet.
Fifty feet?
Yeah.
It all depends how deep it is. I mean, we could, we could dig down, set a rig down and get underneath it within the fifty feet, put a forty foot joint underneath it if we're running forty's. It all depends.
But you will have a construction easement of a hundred and fifty feet.
We got, we got a hundred foot.
A hundred.
Oh, a hundred foot, okay.
We'll stay within that, back up. I mean, we're gonna stay within that where we construct. If we can bore it in fifty feet and bore it fifty feet, we got a back of a hundred feet, back of a hundred feet.
Right. So I think that they'll be within their easement, construction easement and be able to accomplish that.
Drainage district easement fifty feet from center or fifty feet period?
I think it's closer to enter because on, on a drainage ditch.
On the ditches, it.
Yeah, it's only as wide as the spoils that you pile it, so it's not, it's not.
So we got a tile line.
Pardon me?
On a tile line, is it twenty five feet from center or fifty feet from center?
I don't, I think it's stated as fifty feet. I don't think it's stated as from center line.
I misunderstood Bob's question. I thought he was saying why we're gonna have our four boxes within your easement. All construction is gonna take place within our hundred feet. We're not gonna get outside of it.
What do you do with all that? You're gonna have quite a hole then out there on both sides. But there's nothing in the easement that pertains to that particularly on boring out in a field. You're cutting two sixteen on this eighty you're going through. Where you're gonna have more holes.
We're not cutting worn.
You're born up, yeah.
Right.
Okay. Then I gotta make sure that's in the easement that.
Well, it's gonna be different then that we have to. If that's, if that's a method of construction that we're gonna take, it's gonna be in their permit that they issue us, just like I told you this before, like a rope. You got, we got to bore it or we got to open, we got to be this deep, you know? All those instructions are gonna be in the permit that they issue us, and we gotta abide by that permit.
So you have filthy areas that.
We do. And, and I think, Isaac, I believe that you were at those meetings with Bill and myself and Courtney. But I think specifically we're five foot under the engineer's design in a open ditch. That's how far below they'll be. And on any mains or laterals, for what I would call district tile, it would be a minimum of two feet below.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think your concern is soil. We'll keep the soil within the right of what our easement area. So we'll pile soil. You know, we have the fifty foot, which is the permanent easement, and then we have an extra fifty foot for construction. And sometimes we get a little bit extra on top of that by road crossings, things like that. We'll keep the soil in that, in that area. It won't, it won't spread beyond, if that makes sense.
I think a hole about half the size of this room on both sides of that tile to bore it.
It's not gonna be that big, Bob. It's gonna be, it'd be, you know, what is it, eight inch pipe, I think?
Yeah, it's an eight inch.
Yeah, so I mean, it's gonna be maybe fifteen by, by ten, ten by fifteen, it'll all, because all of it will depend on how deep it is.
Would you keep that dirt separate like you do the rest of it then?
Just like. All your possible is already in the strip. The possible be stripped, so everything else is such as well.
But now if you double ditch?
We'll double ditch. Your language states that we're removing topsoil to, in order that we need to construct. In that area, we're gonna remove more topsoil because we know we're gonna have to dig bells there.
And back though the same way.
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else? I've seen no comments being shown. Item number six, Adam Clemmons, Wright County Engineer, secondary roads update.
Last week, due to dry conditions, we pulled the blades. They're out. We lived in box culverts and bridges and then mowing granular routes. So we're almost completed with that. Twenty five percent left in zone two. I did see it going out this morning. Hauling gravel out of Lesher and Minniki, the trucks were doing that, and then also hauling the top dressing on any of the gravel routes. Work orders completed fifteen. There were, I think we had some blowups on some C seventy that we have, we're now having to go patch. And then also, I think Dean called some rock up to the edge of C seventy we needed, so we put some in there. So granular program, seventy six point one nine percent complete, ninety six out of the one twenty six. We've exhausted the old, old pile from Lesher that we're having to top dress, and now we're into their new kind of a blended, so I don't think we're gonna top dress with that. So and then we've done all the top dressing and then our, our fifty nine, they are starting to pour today at noon for the drop walls. So they'll be probably doing the floor, I think, trying to do the floor and the walls at the same time, but I'm not certain. So, but for that cold on our fifty nine.
Well, do they dam that and put a temporary culvert in for the water to flow or?
They've been pumping it. Yep, yep. They've had a lot of sewage into the hole, so they're having to pump it out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any questions for Adam?
No. Thank you.
Dow's porn stays is this weekend. And so Fiona brushing up the roads. The house. It's the big city.
Huge.
Big.
Okay. Item number seven, review and act on pay estimate, number one for DD one hundred. It's J, Joint Drainage District one hundred dash two for work done in Franklin County. It should look like this. So this is a pay estimate, and rather than doing, they have conflicting items this morning, so rather than doing a joint meeting with the ideas to approve this among our board, and then it will go to them and they would approve it and actually pay it. As you can see, the, the two items are locate, which came in right at the bid amount, and then the tree removal, which actually came in underneath the amount that was originally estimated.
I did drive by there and see it.
Right.
We want storm chasing.
So I would make a motion to approve the pay, pay estimate number one for Joint Drainage District one hundred dash two for work done in Franklin County.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve pay estimate number one for Joint Drainage District one hundred dash two for the work that's been completed in Franklin County. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thanks, Courtney. Item number eight. Item number eight is nine fifty, receive update on petition for repair for DD thirty six, sub one lateral A involving railroad property and take possible action. Again, as I talked at the beginning of the meeting, House File one seventeen.
Seven fourteen.
Seven fourteen took effect on July first of this year. And so now, those repairs within the railroad right of way will be done by the railroad. And it requires us to notify them, and then I think they have to take action within thirty days, I believe.
I believe that's what his email said.
So so I'm recommending that we table item number eight until after we've had another meeting with the drainage attorney and come up with the notification towards the railroad since this is new code.
They're gonna take care of any problems we have on their own now.
Supposedly, that's.
On their timeframe?
Yeah, because if it's on their timeframe, then they're gonna get done.
Let's.
Sorry, I say.
Look at your railroad, look at one North Eagle or the Goldfield.
This is how it's amended.
Well, we all know how it is to work with railroad.
The culvert is now defined to include drain tile or train line, tile line, and how it obligates a railroad to repair the drain tile or tile line at its expense within thirty days. Oh, so.
This is the, I don't know if you've seen.
Interesting.
So once you've notified them, they have thirty days to get it.
Correct, correct.
That's like lightning speed for a railroad.
Yeah, I would make a motion to table item number eight. And I would ask that it be placed on the agenda for next week.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to table item number eight, which was a petition for repair in DD thirty six, sub one lateral A involving railroad right of way property. All those in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
Is it layout how, how to contact them? Like who to send it to? Do they have a specific?
No, that's, that's one of the things. But we do have, I mean, we put an application in and paid a fee, so we have a person that we're actually communicating with. So hopefully, that's the same person that we should be communicating with under this new code. Okay, item number nine, review and take action on Wright County Drainage District Crossing Permit Application and Drainage District Access Easement Application. And these two applications, you should have copies of those. It looks like this, yeah. One for Drainage District Act, access. Again, this would be if, if the, if you're going into a drainage area but not crossing any lines, this would be the form that you would fill out. If you're gonna actually cross some lines, you would fill out both of these then. And Courtney has developed these, and there may be some modifications because we until we get into it and find out if we're covering all the information that we need. This is, we think that we've covered all of the bases on the information that we require. Anything to add, Courtney?
These were created based off of some other templates from other neighboring counties and just kind of compiled in together to create what you'd see.
I would make a motion to approve the Wright County Drainage District Access Easement Application and the Wright County Drainage District Crossing Permit Application.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Yeah, item number ten, report of County Engineer on proposed revisions to section ten and fourteen of proposed ordinance number sixty six following public hearing and board's word section.
You all have a copy of that. Start on page twelve. One of the changes that was made over the weekend. Number nine, I'd be sorry. The section ten F nine B just added a reference to section ten H in there for the ordinance. And we'll go over what was done in section ten H as we go through. Section thirteen, there was, in that first paragraph there, it said occupancy and use. We changed it to point of crossing. Crossing was put in, so wherever they cross is where the setbacks will be imposed. So, and then we did take out and also occupancy and use and put in crossing on A, thirteen A, and then we removed the thousand foot setback from the structures occupied structure. You keep going on page number fifteen. And H, this is where it referenced H in that previous. This is about the transfer of permit lease business facility and equipment and change in use. There was, under the direction, we kind of decided that if the pipeline is going to be transferred to a new owner but kept in the same use, they just need to notify the board that the change is happening. The board won't have to make a consent for that, but they have sixty days to do so after the, after the change or before. Yep. And then in that same, if it does transfer and it is going to change, then it needs to go back before the board for consent. To turn a new right of way use and occupancy permit will be issued.
Yeah, we go to the utility board also then.
No, they're not a utility.
Well.
Well, it would probably have to go back through. If it was change of use, it would go back through the I U B.
Okay.
Yep.
Cause they're gonna want to grant you the permit.
Yes, exactly. So then we'll skip down to page twenty one. On E, it's minimum depth between the, below the lowest drainage structure design, low line, we added design in there. And then also for any ability for height difference, we, we stuck in there unless direct, unless a greater depth is required by the county engineer. So we say, hey, we know that we're gonna be cleaning out this ditch or the drainage system's gonna be cleaning out this ditch, you know, in three or four years. Why don't you go two, two feet more than the thirty six? That way you, we can come back in and adjust it. On G, G kind of mirrors the same thing for the setbacks where it's point of crossing. I is point of crossing, and then also the, took out the thousand foot from the the occupied structure. And then in legal terms, which I am not an attorney, he called it a scribbler's error, was found on section twenty. So I don't have that highlighted, but it was in second, it was in second twenty A where I think he was writing in there, like there should have been a list and forgot that he was writing a note to himself. Those are the proposed changes. As per your orders.
And that thousand feet from a structure was taken out because of why, I can't remember.
The board's wishes.
Yes. It doesn't have anything to do with our easements.
Yeah.
I mean, cause we're looking at between roads and crossings and things like that, and it doesn't really fall into a guideline for rest of big dwellings.
Any other questions concerning that?
Now, if, if the, if they're granted a permit from the utility board, does that then trump our code because they are a higher authority?
No.
They're just granted a permit to construct.
Yeah, okay.
To essentially be a pipeline in state.
They still have to apply, they still have to comply with state and local ordinances that are not preempted.
Yeah.
And, and with the mark that you had on there, the question was, would you read that?
This shall not apply or include pipeline companies required to obtain a license from the Utility Division of the Department of Commerce.
Yeah, don't wanna put that in there. Is that, is that your recommendation? Yeah. I would not put that in there. That essentially exempts them from this ordinance. And I think three sixteen, three eighteen.
Three eighteen, and then there was one ninety nine, I do believe.
Three eighteen in the Iowa code states specifically that secondary roads falls under us, so.
When we do our setbacks of, of from the roadways and things like, what are your, what is your stance? I mean, what are your setbacks? I mean, are we that far off on, on, on feet and things like that?
I would say rather than doing setbacks, I think the setbacks are designed for future expansion.
I think the ones that we've, that we've noted in here, the four hundred and ninety five and the two hundred and fifty feet from bridges, as I.
Guarantee. So those type of things.
So what we do instead of necessarily a setback is we take heavier wall pipe and do it for the entire duration of the right of way from one end to the other. And actually ten foot beyond the right of way on both sides. So indeed, you know, have that as the full board or the entire length of the right of way to allow if there's an expansion, the pipe is already designed to hold it.
Okay, that wouldn't, that, that wouldn't, they would have to move it. Let's say we were making it wider and we were, they were within the two fifty and piling had to go in. We would be driving, we could be possibly driving piled directly through that pipe.
Yes.
So that's where you would have to move.
I, yeah, but I would say that's covered in your guys' own crossing permit. The applicant shall at any time subsequent to the installation of a utility line at the applicant's own expense relocate or remove such lines as may be necessary to conform to new grade alignment or widening of the right of way as a result of maintenance or construction operations for highway improvements.
Where are you reading that?
That's directly from your guys' road crossing permit.
Road crossing for tile?
No, road crossing permit.
Working the right of way permit?
Road crossing permit.
I don't have a road crossing permit. I have a tile crossing permit, a working the right of way permit, and utility.
I'm guessing it's working the right of way then. It's whatever permit we submitted for our road crossings. So that's the one I pulled it from.
Okay, I'd have to look and see if you reference that.
I don't pull it up. I don't pull up or buy.
I mean, no, I would just, cause I don't think we're being overly, you know, we're not saying, say, a mile away, where, I mean, with, like on a road two hundred and fifty feet or, or things like that, I guess, I mean, it was, we, we have to work together on this. I don't think that's being overly.
I think what the concern is, our line is, is locked down with Iowa Utility Board. So we're starting our hearings in three weeks. We submitted the final route to them September. We, we don't have the ability to make these moves at this point, especially.
If that, if it would change, you can change it within your corridor. Now, if it was to go out of your corridor, that's the, so, but if it was within the corridor, it, it's not.
We, well, that was probably true a year ago. Right now, we're three weeks away from hearing. We've submitted engineered plaques to Iowa Utilities Board of exactly where we are crossing. Those plaques cannot change as long as they stay X H tracks. We, we, you know, it's too, it's, it's, that's passed, that ability has passed us.
Do we know how many of those are in conflict with our?
I don't, because they never came and told us where they were going. Specifically.
So we can't even go back and look on a map to see, I mean, this could be a munition.
Correct, but it wasn't like for sure where you're going. I get it, but I can't.
I'm just looking, I mean, these, these, these questions or concerns could be mute if, if we knew where your map is going.
I think the main concern is this is a use permit, which means we submitted to you guys a hundred and twenty days before it even comes to the supervisors. So that's a hundred and twenty days after we have the right to construct. And then it comes to, actually, it's still written as a hundred and twenty days after all appeals are finalized. It comes to you guys for the first time. You reject it. Now, we, we could be a hundred and twenty days into what could have been the start of construction. This is a use permit, no matter how you phrase it, it's a use permit, and we've, we've already gone to court on a use permit. This is a use permit, no matter how you, you phrase it, it's a use permit, and we've, we've already gone to court on a use permit. Shelby County already attempted to say, no, this, this needs to go to the Iowa Supreme Court, and that's already been rejected. That happened last week. Use permits. Are trumped by the state, and, and that's what this is. We're not saying we don't wanna sit down and, and have conversations and, but we cannot. Even kind of communicate in a way that we're okay with use permits. Like, that's more challenging than us, that's than us sit down with engineer and having a one by one walkthrough.
Well, I, I guess we would have had that. Route, we would have been able to tell, you know, where our future plans for, for things are, and we could actually would have warned you, so you know what? If you're this close to this grade, you're gonna have to move it because we have a plan next five years to, to.
And there's been situations other counties where they had specific plans and, and we did that, but that, that didn't happen three weeks before permit hearings.
But have we ever seen, we have not seen a final map of where you're going then? Has ever been.
I, I would say we have, we've given, you know, zoomed in. Pictures as well as GPS points to the crossings.
Well, final? Like this is where it's going?
As it's, as it's going to Iowa Utility Board, and we're, we're gonna have to come back and, if any change, come back and resubmit, but as of today, if that, that's a final, if you know.
Was never notified that they were applying.
I guess it won't be final until after Iowa Utility Board.
Right, but you finally, not what you're close to, what your, your finals are.
Yeah.
I mean, that would have been nice to.
You know now.
I mean, that could have solved a lot of issues here if we would have had that document because a lot of these things, and it's not could have been mute.
She, she, they did submit something, but I was never notified that these were, this is where it's going. And I wasn't gonna act on something that I can't put a private facility inside the road right away.
It was GPS points of the best knowledge that we had at the time.
Right, or the stuff that you're gonna apply, you're, you're putting towards utility board, right?
Iowa Utility Board. There might be one, two changes, um. Since we submitted, Bill would probably know the exact date it was submitted, um.
But in our stance, you see, we're working to protect our assets. You know, if, if we would have had that. It would have been easier to work with you because we could have solved a lot of problems in our, in our document.
But we.
And I think that their stance has always been that it preempts local control.
Right.
It would, it was also submitted to you, so we did submit it, and we had it, like, there were certain conflicts, we could have talked about it before we submitted it. Um, but also, you know, you have that protection in, in the permit where it says, if we decide to expand, you have to move your pipe. That's written in there. Um, as well as if, if you guys had proposed projects. You know, I would have hoped in all the conversations Bill had, that would have come up, and then, then it would have come to my level and we could have looked at it. Um, but I don't, to my knowledge, I don't believe that has happened in that county.
What hasn't happened in that?
That there was a specific, hey, we're in the next five years, we're planning to expand this bridge. You guys are relatively close to it, and we have a conversation about this specific one.
Yeah.
Conversation.
Unless there's been conversation from your side saying, this is where we're gonna go, this is our location of our crossing.
Did submit that.
They did, they did, but they were private facilities, I could not act on it.
Yeah. Yeah, so the conver, the conversation.
I understand, they are. Completely wrong. I have, I have told that to multiple county engineers.
Dakota Access did it.
I understand. I have been told by multiple attorneys that private facilities cannot be put in the road right away.
They cannot lay in a road right of ways that they can cross a perpendicular.
So I have no ability to put you in the road right away without proper.
Then.
Hence, next ordinance.
That's fine on your guys' stance, but you, you still can't say we didn't, we didn't give you the location. If, if you chose.
Final location.
The document, the final that we're going to Iowa, Iowa Utilities Board.
It was never notified that it was.
It would have been a waste of our time to try and get comments that were incorrect.
That'd be nice to have, now, if we have that to review and just see what, do we have any issues? I mean, you.
I can work with Bill.
What I mean, I mean, I mean, I, I mean.
So, cause I mean, you have not received, oh, they have not received all the easements, correct?
No.
So.
That's why they're.
Exhibit H is.
They, they, I mean, a few could change, I would say the majority at this point are not going to change.
Because of eminent domain.
Or agreeing with landowners, there's, there's a lot of ways.
Yeah.
But I would say there will be, there could be minor shifts.
So are you, uh, just kind of? If you have to go and see eminent domain on a piece of property, are you, or? You're doing a schedule H showing where it's gonna go through there, whether you've talked to the owner or not, is, you're letting utility board know at that point?
We did last September.
Last September, oh, this is our route, okay. I'm just curious if there, if there's any, is, is there any conflict, you know, with what we're, what we're thinking? I know we wanna protect ourselves, but yet. With, what they're saying is. We have a final line, but.
I guess.
We make arguments for nothing.
Are you wanting to? Me to review those locations for this? Or are you wanting to review it as the work in the right of way permit? That's the question. I can review any location. It's whether or not you want this to govern that. Or the work in the right of way permit to govern.
That was the entire intention behind doing.
Yep.
Uh, I can tell, I can answer that from my standpoint. I want it to be in accordance with this.
If that's the case, then do your first reading and. We'll go on. But if not, I need that direction.
I guess I wanna clarify, in our opinion, it's still a use permit. Um, it still has the right, you know, to delay construction, to be, you know, sat on and not approved or rejected. In a long duration process that's been, you know, pretty well defined in this. Um, and to us, the Iowa Utility Board has that authority. They, they're the go, no go authority on construction of a pipeline. Um, so, you know, there's, there's a huge risk to us in this. Regardless, if, if we fall into, you know, setbacks, there's, there's a lot of other pieces of this ordinance, um. That, you know, that I think it's, it's being shown pretty blatantly that the Iowa Utilities Board has. Has control in, in pipelines. Not that we don't wanna sit down and work with you, that's why we submitted the. Locations of the crossings and, and those conversations, but for this document as it stands, if you go to the Iowa Utility Board, um, as a pipeline company, that they're the deciding factor.
Well, I think either way on this, we should look at, I mean, just so we're ahead of the game, I mean, I, I don't see if we pass.
You have the waiver process. Obviously in here, that you guys have to, would have and.
You have three readings.
So, which would waive that, any of those setbacks?
Same.
I have a question, just clarify, so if. If that was your final was sent to the I U B and you, and you don't have. Landowners. Permission. That document is still fluid. Because unless you just are going in and saying, doesn't matter, we're in.
There could.
So what is the difference if they, I swear I'm not understanding, what's the difference if they're saying, hey? Um, we don't have this complete, this is your setback. So what's the difference in them than a landlord that says? No, you're, you're not gonna go across my land, and then you say, here's your. Imminent domain. You know, are you not gonna move any? So that's the final plan?
I, I would say, I. The exhibit H process is locked in and finalized as we're only three weeks away from hearing. When we talk to landowners, if they ask for shifts. That is definitely a conversation, we're still having. We're still having, and at that point, we would come it back to our permit that we have submitted to Wright County and say, hey, we have a minor, we had a change, we need, we need a change.
So from then, when you did submit the. You haven't made any changes to those, those locations?
I couldn't. I couldn't even tell you when Bill submitted this. There, there very well could be several. We would definitely come back and have those conversations. You know, but I would say it's a lot of road crossings in Wright County.
Mm-hmm.
Most of them are gonna be pretty darn close to final.
I think it's worth looking at.
Have you guys seen, have you seen where the road crossings and the GPS locations and that?
Well, I mean, I've got it posted on the back of my. Thing right here. It doesn't have GPS locations, but uh. But I can figure out pretty close to where. It's gonna go.
They can send you a.
I mean, whether, whether we pass this to get litigated or not, we still wanna make, I'd like to know just if there's major issues or not, at least ahead of time. I mean, would you agree? I mean.
I understand completely. It's my understanding that those weren't, weren't the final, because they were, was never told that they were the final, and then she just admitted that those would have changed and then. I never submitted any changes to me after the fact anyway.
I don't believe that they are the final until the Iowa Utility Board says.
Right.
This is permitted. Then I think it's final. But until then, it is not final.
I, I.
Or.
I agree with that, but I, I don't necessarily agree with though, you know, we haven't been able to give you guys the information until review. I, I agree, we can't, nothing is final until we get a stamp of approval from Iowa Utilities Board.
I mean, this, if, if. This is nothing against carbon solutions, I, I, I'm just looking at how, we need to protect our assets in the best way we can. And. On all of our crossings, we may only have one or two that. We have issues with, but we just, we don't know that. It'd be nice to know that so we can deal with those, you know, one way or the, we still wanna protect our assets.
Absolutely.
And I have sent multiple uh road engineer meetings through, through Iowa and worked through processes with, hey, you know, can we be eight feet deep under this road? Can we back it up because we're expanding? These conversations being had, I, I've been in, in these conversations, so.
This, this washes out really easily, that's the conditions. Or, you know, we've got it on the books in twenty twenty six, we're expanding this bridge. I mean, we can't assume expansion on every, every road in country.
Yeah, we have a five year plan on, on, on a lot of our.
So those, those are conversations that we've been having with counties that started a year and a half ago.
It's time to have them in Wright County.
I'm more than happy to have you guys look.
I mean, I think they were submitted, well, they were submitted on a utility permit.
Yeah.
So you're not a utility, so I wasn't able to act on it.
We were not a public utility.
Correct.
We are a utility. Or a private utility. That's why we go to that.
Understand, but it's as per this, that I cannot put you in the right of way because you're not a public utility.
We're just gonna have to.
I understand.
I mean, whether we agree just we on that, I still like to know where your pipes go.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah.
But at the end of the day, I mean.
That's, yeah, we, either one of us could send it to you.
I think that's, I mean, I think that's a priority. We need to just to see if there is any major issues out there that, that we, and ninety five percent maybe not a, a big deal. And they, and work with it, I just. I just don't wanna a legal battle over, over.
I think you're gonna have a legal battle no matter what. Uh, we have made changes to this ordinance that they requested. I'm ready to act on this ordinance. As a matter of fact, I would make a motion that we approve the first reading of proposed ordinance number sixty six. And ordinance repealing and replacing Wright County ordinance number eighteen. And ordinance to protect and regulate secondary roads right of way and enacting a new right of way control ordinance. To regulate certain occupancies and uses of county right of way.
And I'll start at that.
Now, is that something, can, if we go through the first reading before the next reading, can you find out where? Where that is, so we just have an idea?
Hmm. Of course, Bill.
And then we can find out if there are, is there a lot of conflicts or issues like that?
Good.
That's something?
Um, we're happy to do that. We're happy to talk through individual ones, as long as it may be clear. No, our stance is still that there's things in, in this ordinance that do, that should not apply to us. As a company that had to go through Iowa Utilities Board. So, but we're more, I mean, we've always been, you know, that's why we, that's why Bill exists.
Right.
It's because we wanna do these things.
And you may find out that.
Want those to get.
Yeah, I mean, your, your, your stance is you don't agree with the ordinance itself.
Yeah.
And our aspect is whether the ordinance is that we wanna protect our assets, so let's find out. How many, is there big issues out there? That's, that's the main thing, but let's, and then we can go from there. So we'll mark this process through, I, with the ordinance, but you know, let's figure out what we actually are dealing with. Cause there's unknowns that we don't know.
Oh, motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Yes.
If my memory serves. For me, right, there's a, in the Iowa code. It says that even though your schedule Hs are supposedly locked in. And you brought up Dakota Access, I, I know a few people down there, some things that they're playing, but the Iowa code says, even though you have your schedule each filed with the Utilities Board. You can move it within that corridor. You, you brought up a point that you can move that fifty feet one way or the other, because the stuff I've been given shows that it's on one side of this. Main fifty foot corridor. So that's, so you can put another uh pipeline in if you want to later on when you sell it and stuff.
Well, first I'll stop you there because it's written very clearly in our easement that we cannot put a second pipeline in, we cannot change service hours to go to.
Yeah, I know.
But.
Everything's something to change, I'm an old man, don't, don't argue.
I mean.
In doubt, after, after it went to eminent domain. Dakota Access changed some of the rules and stuff to accommodate some of the landowners and some of the roads. You got, you have your guys go look at it.
I, I, I one hundred percent agree, exhibit H can change at the request of a landlord, and that, that is different than. That's, that's different, and that's usually a couple feet here and there versus, you know, four hundred and ninety foot change, which I'm not saying we need, but. There's a difference, and, you know, I was not Dakota Access, so can't speak to how that went.
But you're right, the lawsuits are just getting started, so.
Okay, I have a, a motion in a second, uh, to approve the first reading of ordinance number sixty six. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Uh, item.
And Adam, you'll, you'll get, next week, you'll get.
Yeah, I'll give a go of that.
Find out, okay.
Uh, item number twelve, consider setting uh the second and final reading of proposed ordinance number sixty six. Um, and ordinance to replace uh Wright County ordinance number eighteen. Uh, I would set that for uh next Monday. Which is the seventh of August.
That's the second reading?
That's the second reading.
With the possibility of waiving the third reading. It was published ahead of time.
Correct.
There was no third read, we went down to reading.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. I said.
No way, there is no way of a third. It is two read. Adam.
I thought all of it's.
No.
Me too.
Your prior.
Just publish, you can, you can waive the third.
Yes.
You're gonna have to take action on way there, it's two readings.
Oh.
After the second.
I'll read the code.
Yeah.
So my motion is to set the, uh, second. Uh, and final reading of proposed ordinance number sixty six and ordinance to replace Wright County ordinance number eighteen. For August, uh.
Pending this, correct with the code?
Yeah, I'm, I'm confident that it's correct.
Sorry.
I have a motion in a second, uh, to approve, uh. Setting the date for the second and final reading for August seventh. On proposed ordinance number sixty six and ordinance re, repealing and replacing Wright County ordinance number eighteen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, motion very.
Meetings.
I had, uh. Second, or, uh.
Second edition.
No, I didn't say it to show us. Practice place and I'll go, I mean.
Oh, okay.
Everything's running smoothly, I was in a bunch of. Bullshit we're going through, other metal fine.
And they've got it segregated now, so.
Yeah, the other clay or the.
New. New building is operable. Carl, uh, D cat last, uh. Wednesday, uh. Five thousand dollars for next fiscal year for parent connections.
Thank you.
Is in the, in the budget that may change as, as funding becomes more, the funding coming back down. Um. We are still waiting on Berry Hill to find out about the counselor in mental health in. Eagle Grove Schools, uh, and they're having a problem getting that one filled, even though there's a need, so we're putting pressure on them, if not, we may do another RFP to find a company that can do.
Right. But, uh, I'm not sure if CFR does something like that or not. It, it has to be, it has to be an in-school counselor.
Yes, it would be, uh, some of those travel, because we, we cover three counties, we cover, uh, Hamilton, Humboldt, and Wright, and then they're in the high schools, uh, I think once a week. And the council that was doing Eagle Grove, I think retired or found another job, so they were, they posted on it, but they haven't found a replacement there, but there is a need. On that, so if they're not, if they're not able to fill that, we can consider them. In violation of their, their contract, and we'd send it out for another request proposal to like CFR or. Could be Iowa.
Yeah, CS.
Any, it, well. They, they're not an organization that actually fulfills those things. It's more or less a nonprofits, like. It would be like Berry Hill or, or, uh, I'm especially hospitals, it would. It would be like Berry Hill or or uh, I'm especially hospitals would would pull those in and say, you know, we're in a bid on this. We can, we can provide these counselors. They'd put, they'd fill out the proposal. It would come to the D cap board and we'd see who. Who would actually do it. So that's kind of been, hopefully they can find somebody. It'd be a lot easier if they can find somebody versus going through the whole process.
Right.
So. And then I have emergency management at four o'clock today.
Okay. Uh. Uh, would you give the brief on the Midas?
Sure. The most recent Midas meeting, uh, Midas Council Government was awarded a six hundred and ninety-seven thousand grand from Iowa Finance Authority. And that is for renovation of twenty-five homes within the six county area. Uh, so we're very pleased with that action of IFA. In conjunction with that, they called in, makes a city all to receive funding for six, for total of six homes, three in Wright, three in Humboldt, renovation was.
Excellent. And then I had the CFR meeting. Uh, again, that was a Zoom meeting. Uh, things are tracking along, uh, normal there. Uh, there was discussion on uh, on getting a report on how they're doing on their capital campaign uh for future expansion. Um, and we should get that next, next month. Uh, and then the September meeting will be held in person and that'll be down in DuBoni. So. And that'll be the first time that we've met in person as an entire board since we've merged with uh. Uh, that outfit out of Cedar Falls. So I've met these people online, but I haven't, you know, face to face with them before. So. Anything else? Yes.
Um. On the second, this Wednesday, four to six, I'll have a Zoom meeting. Um, it's actually a town hall meeting, so it's been a Zoom presentation on public health and HHS alignment. So it might be something you, I'll, I'll, I'll have it running over at my office in that four to six on Wednesday. That you might want to listen into and. You remember the public health, our department of public health and DHS. To HHS. So this is now looking at um, a lot of the different um, subgroups like caves, you know, the segments of these. And epidemiology and.
Good. Our biggest fear is regionalization of public health where it's not the authority of each county. And there's a ninety-nine different. Agencies, but each county is a little bit different in what they choose to provide with public health. And.
Which is not true. We all follow um, Iowa code, Iowa Department of Public Health, CDC guidelines. We did that always with COVID. Anything that I pushed out from COVID came directly from what was administered from the town, so.
But it'd be a lot less controlled by the local officials if it, if it went into regions similar to mental health.
Which, if you can remember the pushback that we had uh several years ago uh on public health.
And that would be another thing. If they regionalize it that way, some of these public health that have home care still doesn't fall under public health. So I mean, it.
That's separate. They're not, you can't care about that. But you know, like your needs and stuff and your, your different local concerns?
It would go to a regional board.
And you, you're diluting the local control.
You, you just absolutely have nothing that you can say that.
Bad idea.
And then how you pay for it.
Yeah.
So there may be a tax.
Okay. Anything else? Want to adjourn?
Sorry.
A motion in a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.